Call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you.
Okay. So, we held item four from the consent calendar. This has authorized the Chair to sign a general indemnity agreement allowing the Hartford Financial Services Group to underwrite a surety bond in the amount of $53,402,501 to stay the judgment in the case of Joseph Hardisty and others versus Sacramento Air Quality Management District and others.
Mr. Gop.
Members of the Board, this is an item that we held from this morning. We just wanted to explain briefly what this item does is that it allows us to get a bond for $53 million. The cost for this bond is $200,000 a year. While we're doing the appeal on the case, our recommendation is for the Chair to sign this for us to have the bond secured. And we do have our Chief Financial Officer if you need any other details.
Thank you. Any questions with the Board?
Just one question, Mr. Chair, if I could. So, in our budget liberations, in the approved budget, we had $1 million set aside for the litigation potential settlement. Is this additional amount, then, the $200,000, is that credited against that $1 million, or is that $1 million set aside remain, and then this is an additional $200,000?
We are going to, it's against the $1 million that we set aside.
It is.
And we will continue to set that money aside for the litigation.
Right, you're going to come back in subsequent years, I get that. But for this year's purposes, for this year's budgeting, you will take the $200,000 to secure this bond from that $1 million that's already been set aside.
Our request is not for any additional budget money. We've already budgeted for it.
All right, thanks. Okay, any other questions, comments? I have no clips from the public. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Forty-three.
Item forty-two is the Squirrel Monkey Haven and Appeal Fee Waiver. Request for a waiver of fees for an appeal of a zoning administrator approval of a use permit located at 11859 North Valanson Road in the southeast community. Chairman, I want to point out that if there are people here that want to address the Board, they need to do an oath. And I can do that now, if you'd like.
Okay, are there any members of the public that are going to speak on this item? If you'll please stand, you need to be sworn. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and that you have been sworn.
Okay, please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. LeAnn Moffett, the County Planning Director. Now, the item before you today is a request by Dawn and Xena Claunch for a waiver of appeal fees. Just as a little bit of background, on March 23rd, 2018, Dawn and Xena Claunch filed an appeal contesting the approval of a use permit that was issued by the county zoning administrator for a kennel facility to hold 55 squirrel monkeys on five acres at 11859 North Valanson Road. The cost of that appeal that they paid was $4,138 to be heard by the Board. The basis for the appeal were two items. One, that a negative declaration had been prepared under the California Environmental Quality Act rather than a full environmental impact report. And secondly, that the use was not allowed under the zoning code. The appeal was considered by the Board on two occasions, on May 8th, 2018, and June 19th, 2018. At the June 19th Board hearing, the Board granted the appeal only as it related to the adequacy of the California Environmental Quality Act document, the fact that an EIR had not been prepared. And then, at the request of the applicant's attorney, not the appellant's, but the applicant for the squirrel monkeys who had agreed to prepare an EIR, the Board directed that an EIR be prepared. That EIR has been prepared and was released in March of 2019, and the actual merits of the item will be scheduled before the Board at an upcoming, very soon, Board hearing. So you will be seeing that item. In April of 2019, Dawn and Xena Claunch requested a waiver of their original appeal fees on the basis that an EIR was ultimately prepared. Staff has determined that there was no staff error, and therefore, it would not be appropriate to approve that at the staff level, and we've forwarded the item to the Board. We are recommending denial of the fee waiver on the basis that there wasn't a staff error. Also, that staff continues to believe that the negative declaration was an appropriate SEQA document, and that significant costs were incurred, particularly as related to processing the appeal, which staff has estimated, with all the meetings involved, have been upwards of around $30,000. So that concludes the staff presentation. I'd be available if you have any questions. And I would also note, we do have Dawn and Xena Claunch, who are requesting the fee waiver in the audience.
And I do have cards from them in, so Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, LeAnn, and I know we'll hear from Dawn and Xena Claunch in a moment, but a couple of questions. One, the, well, actually, kind of a comment, because when I briefed with you, the, it was, comment I made to you was that this was based upon the appeal, was the only way under our current structure in the zoning code that this could come before the Board of Supervisors. The zoning administrator was the designated hearing body, and had, they chose another route, they would have only taken this to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which would have been a planning commission. Could you tell me what the cost of that appeal would have been from the zoning administrator to the BZA?
I believe it's in the $3,000 range to go to the BZA for a project appeal. It's four? It's $4,000. It's very close to the cost of the Board.
Very close to this? It would have been the same cost. But they had no other route. In order to get this before the Board, assuming they could make the case, they or anybody else in this case, if you had a similar set of circumstances, then the only way that they could properly get it before us was to file the appeal and pay the fee. That's correct?
Had they appealed on the basis solely of the project merits, yes, that would have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that cannot be further appealed to the Board. When they appealed on the basis of the merits of the SEQA document, that provides a path for the Board. And then, because of the threat of a potential lawsuit, that's why the applicant's attorney then agreed to incur the costs of preparing a full AIR on the basis that the original applicant's attorney felt that that was more defensible if it ended up going to court.
The, the fact that they chose that process, well, we never really, we heard the project, I guess, in a sense, but we never decided the merits of it, because, again, this time last year, as you just noted, the applicant's attorney on behalf of the Buckmasters made the decision to go, you know, go back and do a full environmental document. It was interesting, because one of the things, and again, you know, certainly want to hear from the Claunches, that was pointed out, though, in the communication that came, and I went back and reread this again last evening, again, actually, this afternoon, was, you know, recognizing all the testimony, and again, we're not getting into that detail, obviously, we have a fee waiver request before us, but that in the communication that came from the counsel for the proponents, from the Buckmasters, said that, that they were informing the county, and it was embodied in the staff report that you only brought forward, that was approved by this Board to go forward with the EIR, preparation of the EIR, says they wish to inform you of our intent and desire to prepare an environmental impact report with regards to this project. As such, we support the appellant's substantive request in their appeal. And I think part of what I've read, and again, I'm going to link that back, I'm expecting necessarily to weigh in on this, but that, in the Claunches' appeal, although I'm not so sure that it's 100% accurate in a way it's portrayed, that it was basically that they had to get this to the Board, they paid the fund, they fee to do that, obviously, secured an attorney to do that, made the arguments, and that, based on that, ultimately, certainly, the applicant made a decision, but this Board approved that, and that was, that there should be further environmental review. Now, again, staff has taken a position, as you did previously, very consistent, that preparation of negative declaration was the appropriate document from the staff perspective. The Claunches and other neighborhood folks argued that there were other impacts, that those should be weighed out in a more thorough format, I guess, and therefore, the applicant chose, again, and presented this Board, that's the action we took. So, I just wanted to point that out again, it's not inconsistent with what's in the staff report, but again, as I read the material from the Claunches' appeal, certainly going back to the staff report that was prepared in June, recognizing, obviously, that environmental document has been prepared, it goes into a more thorough investigation of some of the issues that were raised, it may come to the same conclusions, and ultimately, this Board will obviously hear that matter in the next few weeks, I guess, as soon as maybe next week, as I understand it. So, okay, I just wanted to be clear on those points. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others? All right, then, we will hear from the Claunches. Dawn Claunch.
Mr. Chair, I don't know, again, I know we have a, you know, a certain time limitation, I don't know what, how much time they need, but I certainly would ask that they be given a few minutes to make their presentation.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not even starting the clock.
Okay, I just didn't know. Okay, thanks.
I'm Dawn Claunch, and I've been sworn in. Trust me, this will be very brief, because I'm not a real good speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. We are seeking a waiver of our appeal fees based upon the fact we were successful in requiring the EIR. Once the EIR was completed, the information generated by this document provided information to not only the Board, but also the public. The information contained in the EIR has proven to be satisfactory for the project, and we have chosen not to challenge it, and have since relocated to a new residence. It is unfortunate that we have had to bear the extremely high cost of this appeal fee, but we did not consider the project viable without everyone executing due diligence in this matter. We are convinced that had we not appealed the initial decision, neither the Board nor the public would have been fully aware of the impact this project brought with it. Therefore, we are asking for a waiver of our appeal fees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
And Xena Claunch.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I have no other cards, so we'll bring it back to the Board for discussion. Supervisor Frost.
I have a question for LeAnn. My understanding is that when someone files for an appeal, there's documentation and a clear, there's, there is no guarantee that they'll get a refund on their money if they win the appeal versus lose the appeal. Is that correct? Or how does it work? What kind of notification upfront do they receive?
I don't, they fill out a form, and they file that with the Clerk of the Board's office, and I don't believe that there's any expectation that they're going to necessarily get the money back. I mean, essentially, it's a contribution towards the cost of holding a hearing and preparing the materials and everything involved. So they are required to pay a fee and told that that's the cost of filing the appeal. The only folks who really have a, right now, have the option of a free appeal would be the Community Planning Advisory Council. In this case, the local Community Planning Advisory Council had recommended approval of the project. And so, it didn't bump away from the zoning administrator to the Planning Commission, and there was no path through the CPAC for that community-wide interest appeal because of the CPAC original recommendation for approval.
Thank you, that's all I have right now.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And as I kind of noted my questions to LeAnn, you know, certainly reflecting on this, and I think that, you know, there's something key in what was said by LeAnn responding to Supervisor Frost, and that was this kind of community-wide interest as it related to this matter, and certainly, I think all of us as Board members learn more about this topic, and obviously, we're going to weigh in on it when it comes before us, as soon as next week. And it did, I think, provide, you know, significant opportunity for not only discussion, but to learn about what was being proposed. It's not a very ordinary request, certainly wild animal keeping, we have a few facilities, certainly a couple notable ones in the southern part of the county, and this, you know, again, is, there was, I think, noted, made that it was akin to a cattery or to a kennel, dog kennel, at least as related to zoning code determination. That was actually part of the appeal that was made, at least that was pointed out in the letters, counsel on behalf of the Claunches. And so, as I've, you know, reflected on this, that, you know, there's this issue about staff error, and I don't see a staff error, but there's also other special circumstances that would justify consideration of a waiver, and I think certainly Supervisor Frost raises a point that, you know, there should be no expectation of getting a fee waived or necessarily returned. But I do think this case, that it certainly brought to the forefront, albeit, obviously, the applicants and even staff may have seen it differently than those that argued on behalf of the appeal, or maybe even members of this Board. And a tremendous amount of time was devoted to it, there's no doubt about that. But I was, the other point I wanted to make, and it's something that is in the context, obviously, of discussions we've had about what it actually costs versus people having the opportunity to bring matters to this body, the elected body of this county, and to hear matters, big or small. And, you know, when it comes down to thousands of dollars for the general citizenry, that is a barrier, and recognizing that we have a fiduciary responsibility through the general fund to, you know, try to recover costs. And I would just say, I say that because $4,000 to get a matter, and they had to use a route that was a little circuitous, albeit very appropriate, to get this matter before the Board. And so, I think upon further reflection, at least in my view, and again, I think that I'm going to fall back to this special circumstances, in the sense that I think that we learned a lot as a Board, we still have to make a decision on this, it can be forced, we retain that at this level. I don't see a staff error, but I also do see a community-wide discussion that was important. A lot of neighbors weighed in, some in support of what the Claunches' appeal brought forward, but also all the others who may have seen it differently, as well as a broader community that were interested in animal welfare and such. And so, I think based upon those circumstances, I'd be prepared to support the return of the appeal fee. And I would also offer, though, that in event this, my fellow Board members don't see that, that I would be willing to step up with some of the neighborhood monies from District Five to do this. I think that this was an extraordinary set of circumstances, and one, again, that still hasn't been determined by this Board, but this isn't just an appeal on somebody's desire to want to split their property. This actually was one where I think we gained knowledge through the process. The environmental document documents some of the issues that were raised at the time relative to safety, to interface between wild animals and their handlers, as well as the general public. And I think, as Mr. Claunch said in his testimony, obviously, that information is now there for all the public, for this Board, and for the general public, as well as, obviously, the applicants who'll be before us, and have that presented properly. And it is in more detail, I've looked at the environmental document, I haven't read it from cover to cover. It does go into additional detail on the issues that were before this Board when we talked about it last, last spring and last summer. So, I'm prepared, under the guise of, I think, a special circumstance, and a broader community-wide discussion that was important for this, and maybe even for, as a precedent to other discussions that we have about keeping of wild animals in areas in the county where there may be concerns about that versus, you know, neighborhood, other neighborhood considerations. And so, for those reasons, I'm prepared to support the waiver, but I would also offer, as I said, if there's not agreement by my colleagues to support the waiver, and I would, dedicate the neighborhood funds from District Five to cover that, the cost of return of the repeal fee.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
Is that something that can be done? Can you use neighborhood funds for something like that?
I'm actually not sure where the guidelines are. I think it's for a community project. Without seeing the guidelines, I don't.
If you can give us about five minutes to look at the guidelines.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Can you find that? Yeah.
Okay, we're back in session. We are actually going to hold over item, that item, and go to item forty-three while we work on a solution to that.
Okay. For item forty-three, it requires an oath as well. This is for the Jevon Shell Food Mart, a Use Permit Amendment and Design Review to allow 24-hour operations for an existing automobile service station and convenience store in the general commercial zoning district for a property located at 7149 South Watt Avenue. And this is in the Vineyard Community. And the environmental determination is a negative declaration. If anyone's here, they'll need to get sworn in. Okay, please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? Okay, and when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Ms. Moffett.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. LeAnn Moffett, your Planning Director, and I do have a PowerPoint on this item. So this is the Jevon Shell Food Mart. It is an existing service station located in the Vineyard Community at 7149 South Watt Avenue, at the northeast corner of South Watt and Florin Road. The current operation has, was permitted via use permit, and the request is to amend the use permit so that they can continue to operate the existing automobile service station and convenience store on a 24-hour basis. And we've also thrown in design review, since we weren't doing that back when the project originally went through the process. So, as background, the Board approved the service station project in June of 1999 for a primary automobile service station, a 24-hour convenience market, a quick-serve restaurant, and a car wash. And one of the conditions on the original project, in part because the area wasn't very well built out, the community plan wasn't done yet, and it hadn't really been figured out what might be immediately surrounding this area, was for a 10-year sunset on the 24-hour operation of the service station and convenience store. So that actually expired in June of 2009, and it was only recently during one of the business license reviews that our staff went through the details of that original use permit, and actually caught the, found condition 23, which takes a little bit of digging to find, and realized that there was an issue, then we approached the owners, and they've come in for the use permit amendment. And I will, we will point out that the service station was essentially constructed by 2000. We've scanned in the original exhibit. You can see what they look like back in 1999, a little more rustic back then, so that's the original layout, and the site does conform to this layout. Here are some photos showing the canopy and the landscaping on-site, as well as some of the signage. There are no physical changes proposed to the existing structures or signage, or essentially, there's nothing physical changing on the site. County code standards have changed in the ensuing years, however, because there are no physical changes, they're considered existing non-conforming with regard to the built environment, and we're not trying to seek to have them modify the physical appearance to meet current code standards. The existing use has been in operation for 18 years, and for this, we did an initial study negative declaration. Because they were approaching the county to amend the use permit conditions, that has actually provided us the opportunity to ask for a couple of changes to their existing conditions, so I wanted to go through those. Starting off with condition number 15, previously, they were allowed to sell alcohol until midnight, and so, we are asking now that they cut that off at 10:00 PM. The car wash facility had, previously, had hours of operation between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and we are asking to narrow that down from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And in exchange, they would be allowed to continue the 24-hour operation of the service station and convenience store, otherwise, they would have to go to more narrowed hours of 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM for those two items. We're also asking them to bring the landscaping, refresh it a little bit, even though it's not bad, as you saw in the photo, it's better than some service stations out there. We have not asked them to do the more Septed friendly landscaping, because they have that all installed, we haven't had any documented problems on the site, and that would be more of a physical change, and there was nothing really to trigger that. We've also added conditions 38 and 39, having to do with healthy store initiatives, so that they've agreed to provide 15% of their shelf space for healthy foods, such as fruits, vegetables, and dairies up in the front of the store. And the original conditions had addressed all the typical safety items with regard to the sheriff, which the sheriff did re-review, so all the lighting and security cameras and videos are all covered by the original use permit conditions, and those are not amended. So, before you, we have a recommendation of approval from the Design Review Administrator, unanimous recommendation for approval from the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council, and I will note, there were no members of the public who spoke or opposed at that CPAC meeting, so there's been no opposition at all through the process. Planning staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval of the project. So this slide summarizes the staff recommendations that are in your Board report.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. LeAnn, these new standards, 38 and 39, I had a question about, says at least 2% of healthy food products need to be on the shelf. Has the Health Education Council, is that a county council or a state council, or?
That's a local group, and so, and they do participate in the review of our projects, and we have been doing this on convenience stores for quite a while, so that's something that's pretty well worked out, and this has become, over the last two or three years, a pretty standard condition that we're putting on all the convenience stores, and I haven't heard any complaints, and typically, people are accepting it.
Well, how do people know what is considered healthy, I mean, I think we all have an idea what healthy foods are, but usually if there's-
Snickers bars.
Snicker bars, yeah. There's peanuts in them, right?
Fritos.
Usually, there's a follow-up oversight for something where you're required to do something, so is there a list that they, of foods they can choose from?
Yes, there is a worked-out list, it's fruits, vegetables, salads, dairy products, yes, there is a worked-out list of things that are considered healthy.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not so much questions, just to, little further addition to what LeAnn has certainly added and put into the staff report, as well as, obviously, the environmental document, would just note that, at the time, we were talking about how we might initiate the Florin-Vineyard Gap discussions, and North Vineyard Station had just come to the Board, you know, a year or two prior, and so, there was a lot of speculation about what might happen out there, and this site, obviously, was available, it's really still owned by the same family and proprietors that brought it for us 20 years ago. And I remember the discussion, because they weren't real pleased with only being able to operate 24 hours for 10 years under that, but because we didn't know what interface it might be with future residential uses, and there was a couple of comments at the time, I've ever, Jason property owner who, there's a small house that's adjacent there, and, but we, you know, dealt with that with the block wall, and certainly with the, some of the drive patterns on the site itself, and it's a fairly small site. I would just say that, on occasion, certainly not any time real recent, but I've visited the site, it, you know, as you said, maybe a little bit of refreshing of the landscaping, but certainly well-maintained, and right now, at the four corners, it's still the only really developed use, there's a post office, obviously, in Supervisor Kennedy's district that kind of sits in the rear of that ten-acre site immediately diagonally across the road, but there's, you know, future plans for use of the site, but this, you know, was one of the first service stations along that stretch, coming from, almost from Calvine Road up to Fruit Ridge, Eldora Creek, where there are service stations in a couple different locations there. But to my knowledge, there's been no issues with this, and certainly, Mr. Jervona Fred and others have been, I think, pretty conscientious in their business conduct out there, and I believe they even had, at the time, there were some people that were supporting, because there wasn't, there was kind of a dearth of, there was, you know, the Beanie Market at Gerber at Bradshaw, and then, that was it till you got closer into Florin Town, into some of the areas, get closer to the freeway. So, you know, my sense is, as you've stated, that they've been a good, you know, good proprietor, that they've, you know, kept up with the conditions, albeit this one with the 24 hours that kind of got set, and then, we didn't really, you know, make note of it, I guess, in business license renewals until a more thorough review here recently, so I just want to make those comments.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. At this point, let the applicant have an opportunity to make a very brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Jim Wiley with Taylor &amp; Wiley on behalf of the applicant, and I have been sworn. We'd just like to thank staff for their work on this, Jesse Shun especially, and we really don't have anything to add. I will say, it was pleasant going out to community council and have them comment that this is a really clean bathroom, and they- this is a really clean bathroom, and they like the operations, so, with that, we would ask for your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Peters.
I have a quick question I should have asked it before, but I'm not familiar with the gas station, I've seen the pictures in the staff report. On the landscaping, I think planning director said they're, they weren't going to replace it, because it was in pretty good shape, but I just want to make sure that your client is aware of the SEPTED defensive kind of landscaping, and if they do landscape in the future, to keep those in mind.
Okay.
If you just would.
Yeah.
Civilization is coming your way.
Right. Thank you.
Any others?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, back to the board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, then, if there's no further questions or testimony, then I would move the recommended action as outlined, which includes the environmental document, the use permit, with the conditions and findings outlined in our attachments, and find the project as well, in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines.
Second.
We have a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Mr. Gill.
I think we've researched the item, and county council has the options, or...
Right. So, during the break, we pulled the policies for community services projects and neighborhood projects that can be funded with TOT funds, this is pretty clearly not a community service project, so we concentrated on the policy for the neighborhood projects. I do not think, unfortunately, this falls within the guidelines. The policy requires that the money must be used for a public purpose, provided by a county department, another government agency, or a nonprofit providing services to the community, and I don't think that this qualifies, holding an appeal hearing is not a service that's being provided to the community. This is just something that we do because it's required by the zoning code. Then it also indicates, requires that the project or service funded has to have a clear and measurable, deliverable, or outcome, that doesn't apply, and then, there are other problems as well, but also that it can't be allocated on a retroactive basis, and I would consider this to be retroactive, because the money was already spent. So, there are other issues here as well, I just don't think this is the kind of, the kind of expenditure that qualifies under the policy.
Supervisor Natale.
Then, might I suggest a different approach that would, again, my desire was, I'm prepared to grant the appeal, but was to make the planning department whole, so I would be willing to, you know, if we want to do a separate action, I can certainly reallocate, it's general fund dollars, and if there's that amount, I don't want, you know, I know LeAnn's department, obviously, when these appeals get heard, they end up eating that amount, so if you want to do internal appropriation adjustments, I would move to, you know, as part of motion, make sure that the planning department is made whole, but to grant the appeal, so, I don't know if that works, Chris, it's a different...
I'm looking to nab for that one, I don't know.
Basically, you can give the planning department $4,381 out of my neighborhood monies to that department. You can do the separate action, you don't have to...
Same, the TOT fund?
Yeah. Those are, it's general fund money. We get told time and time again, Chris, that those are general fund dollars.
Well, I think what we have...
But their policy, there's a policy that indicates how they can be governed. If you're talking about the same funding source, that doesn't fit within the policy.
Then just give me $15,000 this year and keep $5,000 in the general fund. I don't care. I mean, you need to figure out a way to do it creatively that doesn't go, I appreciate what you're saying, you researched it, I don't disagree with what you've said, because those are the guidelines, just give the allocation differently to District 5 this year.
I will say that, as much as I appreciate creativity as next to the next person, I also appreciate legality, and it sounds like that's...
Yeah, it doesn't fit under the TOT funds, I don't see a way to do that.
Okay, so then, the only option we have is either deny the request or grant the request, if we grant the request, then I know the way it works is the planning department eats the cost, and all I'm saying is, I don't want the planning department eat the cost, I can work with you later, do that, I can, you know, assuming I have support to grant the appeal. It'd be my commitment to make sure that the planning department was made whole, as it relates to this...
I'm going to make the following suggestion, and that's, I think we understand what Supervisor Natale's ultimate goal is, you know, the initial proposal to reach that goal is probably not within the confines of the law, so that's okay. If we were to continue this, and you would be able to have a conversation with Mr. Natale and figure out if there is some way in which we can make the planning department whole, it doesn't cost, I don't want it coming out of the general fund, frankly, I think it's a bad precedent, because I'm not, at this point, willing to support the appeal, or the appellant, but I want to give Supervisor Natale an opportunity to accomplish the goals that he's doing within the confines of the law and not affecting the general fund. Can we do that?
Yes, we can.
Then I move for a continuance to...
You're...
7/23.
Can we go August 6? Give us time to look at what we need to do on it.
Isn't this coming back for, to be heard next week?
Next week. Well, but that doesn't have any impact on it.
I don't think you want to couple it with that.
This is just a waiver of the fee.
Just to avoid having people come down again, it's just seems more efficient, but...
I don't want to confuse the issues.
We're Sacramento County, efficiencies is not important, so...
August 6.
August 6, okay.
Okay.
All right, I move that we continue this to August 6 and give an opportunity to figure out how to get to where we, I think, we all want to get.
Okay.
Just ask a question.
Yes.
I believe all of this is in assuming that the board would uphold the staff recommendation for denial, and you're...
Right.
So, why don't, maybe we should vote on that?
I think it's cleaner to do it at the same time.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
It's $4,000, so are you really going to, thank you very much. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
What time? Any particular time?
I think we'll do 2:00 PM, Flo.
Yeah, we can do 2:00 PM.
We will communicate the time out, depending on our agenda management, but we'll let the folks know what time.
Okay. Looks like August 6 at 2:00 PM right now, so...
At the same time, I just want to, you know, make the observation that this in no way means that the board has predisposed one way or the other toward granting the waiver. Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry. So, your next item is item 44. This is the appointment from your own ranks to the Law Library Board of Trustees, and this appointment would be of Lisa Travis.
I move Lisa Travis.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Next is your own ranks to the National Association of Counties, NACO, and that would be for Mr. Serna as the member and Ms. Peters as the alternate.
I'll move.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and then we have own ranks to the Regional Water Authority. That would be Susan Peters as the member and Carrie Schmitz as the alternate.
Would anyone else like to do that?
I think that you're ultimately most qualified. I'll second that.
Get the boots out here.
Mr. Natale, unanimous vote with those members present, and then that concludes your own rank appointments, and we already took care of nominations, and now we're on to county executive comments.
No comments.
Board? I want to congratulate Supervisor Peters on her appointment. Other than that, we are adjourned.
Everywhere, though.
I'm glad you didn't leave your sense of humor in Ireland.